Good morning. It is Tuesday, July 30th, 2024, and I'll call to order the meeting at the Story County Board of Supervisors. Please stand if you are able to say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Unless there's any changes, I'll take a motion to adopt today's agenda. Second, then moved in seconded Merkin. Basil?
Aye.
Haddon's, aye. Supervisor Merkin, you want to turn on your mic as well?
Thank you.
I forgot last time. Now is the time for public comment. This public, this comment period is for public to address items on today's agenda. If you'd like to make public comment, please raise your hand on Zoom or come forward here in the meeting room. All right, we will close public comment number one. We're going to move on now to a recognition that we have. We have recognition of Brett McLean for his 25 years of service to Story County. Just a little bit of information that I have, and then I have a couple of folks that will make a few comments, is that Brett was the Story County Veterans Affairs Director for, I believe, 25 years and four months. That's how it rounded out too. He was also the, previously the Iowa Association of County Commissioners of Veterans Affairs President, and served 20 years and nine months in the US Navy, if I am correct for that. I know one of Brett's big things within Veterans Affairs was helping veterans to be assisted in getting their benefits that they were entitled to, and did a significant amount of research, not just sitting in an office in Ames, but really going out to each of the communities and having a benefits day and just being in their area to help numerous veterans or their spouses access those services, and spearheaded the supermarket that's done each year. I know that has grown over the years as well because I've gone out the last several years myself as a supervisor and seeing it out of the plex, at one time in the smaller room, and now it's in the bigger, the bigger room and just the volume of veterans. And I know you run out of donuts and coffee quite quickly there because you always plan thinking how many veterans you're going to have or spouses that are going to show up, and it's always way beyond the number. And I think that's really a testament to the outreach that you've done, the relationships that you've built up Brett, and really your commitment to supporting, supporting veterans. I now want to ask Erin Riewerts, who has worked as one of your colleagues, to come up and say a few comments. I think you should have him come to the front of the class and stand at the front of the room.
So Brett has had probably the smallest department in Story County his entire time here, right? One person. Occasionally, he had another person. And then he ended up with me about eight years ago, half-time technically. So, yes, I mean, Lisa summed up Brett's time here very well. He, one of his strengths is talking and visiting with people. So he did a very nice job of keeping us busy and always trying to help out people with whatever requests they called with, no matter what it was, from, "I need somebody to mow my lawn," to, "Can you help me, you know, file a federal claim?" So, yeah, he's moving on to bigger and better things though, and we're still going to keep him busy driving the van. So, thank you Brett.
Nick, did you want to, as the Commission's Chair, did you want to make any comments? Sorry, drunk person. Yep. Either, either of you want to make?
Oh, yes. We want it on the recording, yes.
Well, first of all, my name is Harlan Borton. I was Commissioner for 28 years. I was one of the Commissioners that hired Brett. And I tell you, one thing that he has accomplished that has really helped Story County is when he started, there was $2 million worth of federal benefits coming to Story County. And when he retired, there's $38 million coming to Story County. And one man did, I'm really proud of him. So, that's all I've got to say.
Well, thank you. Any other comments?
Yeah, I would, I would like to just acknowledge an entire lifetime of service, not just to Story County, but to our country and to all of, all of the veterans that you have served and our, our greater community. I, I always looked forward to running into you in the halls when I worked over in Ames in the Human Services Building. You were always positive and brought this energy with you into whatever room you walked into. And I was always excited to hear about the, the new things you were bringing to people and the, the way that you were connecting across our entire county. And I just want to say thank you because it's, it's a lifetime of service to all of us, and I'm glad we're acknowledging it.
And Brett is one of the first county employees I think I met, so I've known you for quite a while and have appreciated everything you do. And what I have particularly appreciated is you don't just, you never just sat in the office and waited for veterans to come to you. You know, you're going out in the communities, saying, "I'm going to be in Zearing today. I'm going to be in Slater at the La Cabe. And I'm going to be wherever." You know, you would meet veterans wherever it was convenient for them. You made that easy. You made the, that whole dealing with the federal bureaucracy so much easier for them, and that's something that veterans really deserve from us. So I appreciate everything that you have done, as I know everybody in Story County does, and we're glad you're still here and glad you went on RagBri. Yeah.
So with that, with that Brett, we'd like you to come up. I have a plaque to present to you, and we will get a picture. All right, moving on, we have the 2024 Insurance Review.
Sorry, speak to the manager.
Good morning. Thank you for placing us on the agenda. We appreciate the opportunity to talk about and provide an overview of the county's property casualty insurance. I'm Steve Goody with Naptodesco Insurance and joined this morning by Andrew Rickles. We've got about eight slides we're going to walk through, and we'll just queue, queue you up for a slide succession, if you will, and then be happy to take some questions when we get to the and/or questions along the way. I'm going to turn to Andrew. Andrew's going to provide some comments about the market, about market conditions, and then we'll go into a work comp renewal review.
I appreciate that sigh there, Linda, because yeah, that is the current insurance market right now. You know, we've presented here many years, and the last three years, every year, I think I'm on a broken record. Insurance market is not very pleasant right now, and mostly property-driven, as everybody has seen with their probably own homeowners' policies. It's not getting better. What's driving that, as we all know, is storm activity. I think last week in Des Moines Register, they had an article that said there's been 126 tornadoes in the state of Iowa. It is third of all states in the country, and it already is a record for a year, and we still got a lot of months left. So it's not slowing down. The weather activities seem to be increasing each and every year. Insurance companies are trying to catch up. But by trying to catch up, it's through rate, it's through deductibles, and it's also through just pulling out of the state. We've seen numerous carriers that are no longer writing insurance, property insurance in the state of Iowa. So kind of a lead-in to what we'll talk about here today. With that being said, the opposite side of that work comp is in a very good marketplace right now. Work comp rates are driven by the state of Iowa. They set the rates. Those rates, I believe, now six years in a row have gone down. In fact, this past year, it was a double-digit decrease in rates for the state of Iowa. So property's going way up, work comp's going down. So just a quick overview. All right, flip the slide. So we'll kind of go through your claims here for work comp from a county standpoint. This first slide here is just number of total work comp claims from the county. This last year, you guys had an absolutely outstanding year from a county standpoint. You only had 15 claims from all your employees over a year period. The only year you had less than that going back to 2017 was 2020. We all know what happened that year. We know why there wasn't very many claims. But yeah, an absolutely great, great year from a work comp number claims standpoint. Flip the slide. So here's the paid work comp claims this past year. Again, you'll see this past year, you had about $12,000 total. There's about 7,500 in reserve and 4,800 that's been paid. Again, two previous years, we had a little bit of a spike in some paid claims, but again, this past year was absolutely outstanding. And with work comp, as you all know, your number of claims is kind of what generates your premiums. So you take your payroll times your rate and then the credit based off your, off your claims history. Next slide. So here is that, what's called Experience Modification. 1.0 is average. So you guys are at a .65, so you are getting 35% credit on those state rates because of your outstanding claims history. This puts you in the top 10% of IMWCA, who handles your work comp for the whole state of Iowa. So congratulations. It is a very, very, very good experience mod. So again, and it's, it's low, but you guys have been low for a very long time. You're, what you guys do from a safety program here, this is where it's reflected, and then again, it's reflected in your premiums as well. So kudos to you. Last one is just, again, as I mentioned before, it's payroll times rate with your experience factor is kind of in general terms, how you get your premiums for work comp. Here is your payrolls for the 24 to 25 term by classification. Overall payrolls increased to just over $20 million from 19.7 roughly before. So again, we'll be reflecting your premiums in the back. So payrolls are up, but again, what you'll see is your premiums are down because rates are going down and your experience mod is so low. So that is all I have on the work comp standpoint. We'll turn over to Steve here for the other lines of coverage.
Next slide. This is a snapshot of your property liability and auto claims over a five-year basis. So five-year look back, you'll see that you've had 13 claims over the five-year period, call it two and a half claims a year, about $3,200 per claim. And as you know, you insure the auto, the physical damage of the auto. These are liability claims. Got one small claim that's still open right now, $1,800 in reserve. If you look at the amount of activity you have out on, people you have out on the road, this is not a significant concern to have a couple of claims a year. Liability, you've had 12 claims over the past five years. These are slip and falls, paid out about $88,000. As you can see, there's nothing reserved today. Property is where, kind of piggybacking off of Andrew's comments, we've had some claims over the years. We had a claim several years ago on the Justice Center. That was a large claim. We had a claim going back to 2021, I believe, that paid out about $90,000. One in May this past year paid out about $5,000. You've got a little bit in reserve, but that's where we've seen some claim activity. You're not alone. Other municipalities, counties, cities across, across the state have seen that sort of claim activity as well. A little claim activity on the professional employment liability side, nine claims over the past five years, 240,000 paid out, about 154,000 comprised of about five claims that it's still in reserve. One claim just closed to the tune of about $65,000. So those, we moved those claims through the process as quickly as we can, a little zoning action, some discrimination, a little bit on the police protection or police professional side, but a little claim activity there as well. But again, looking back over a five-year period, your claim activity is, is, is good in that, in that respect. Next slide. Here's a kind of a coverage snapshot. We don't provide all the detail, just a summary of it. We go through the detail with Alyssa and Steph, Stephanie. About you've got $94 million in building and personal property, subject to a $50,000 deductible. We moved that deductible out back in 2019. Those of you that were on the board recall, we did a deductible study and concluded that it made sense to increase that from 10,000 to 50,000 at the time. And then ICAP did lay in a 2%, wind hail deductible this year, very common in the industry. It appears to be where all commercial property is headed on a 2%, in many cases, 3% to 5% wind hail deductible. So that was across the board, the 2% wind hail, and that'll apply per building as those claims happen that are wind and hail. And you'll see equipment, general liability are all $10,000 deductibles. Auto liability, again, there's no deductible there. Law enforcement, public officials, excess liability. So technically, you've got 2 million of underlying, 13 million of excess for a total of 15 million. And then would point out, and, and well, maybe make some other comments at the end here, but cyber, we've talked about this in the past. This is a, this is a low level of coverage, and I think that the key issue is that the county needs to have multi-factor authentication in place. I think that's either happening or has happened. Maybe as a new IT director gets on board, we might connect with that person and, and look at some higher limits on that. Those are low limits as it relates to what we're seeing in the industry today. And then a little crime coverage and flood coverage as well. If you flip the page, here's how that 94 million breaks down. $74 million in building coverage, 75 million. That increased, that increases every year, just to keep up with the cost of inflation, cost of materials. CAP will take a rate across the board in that. Personal property is furniture, fixture, equipment in all of the buildings, $7 million there. Computers and equipment, that is not inclusive of all your computers and equipment. That's just the leased equipment. So leased equipment, copiers, things of that nature is 416,000. The rest of your computers and computer equipment rolls up under personal property. Fine arts, the can and out front, public art, things of that nature, just a little over $500,000 there. Miscellaneous property would be scheduled, road graders, trailers, other road equipment. Again, the vehicles are not, are self-insured, but everything else is scheduled here. And then just miscellaneous tools and equipment is, are that 857,000. So 94 million, it went up 10% in insured value. And again, that's just to stay up with, with the cost of inflation and replacement cost. Last slide is your premium summary. ICAP did take some rates. Some of that came alongside the increase in values. So as you, you have more increased replacement cost valuations, then you're going to pay a little more premium. But total ICAP package premium was up 29%. The work comp was down 24% to Andrew's comment earlier. That's the, that's the really shining star here. And you'll see the footnote down below. That, that premium starts out at $374,000. There's $263,000 worth of discounts related to your experience mod, to a low loss ratio, to a large premium discounts. And that gets, takes it all the way down to $111,000. So IMWCA is a, is a, is a good place to have your comp. We looked back in 2019, could we be competitive in other, with other carriers, and we just couldn't touch it. It's, it's a good pool. That pool is profitable. They're doing really, really well. Total premium, 671,508. You're up 18% year-over-year. Talked a little bit when we met with Lisa and Alyssa and Steph, Stephanie about perhaps if the market stabilizes, about trying to take property out to market next year. We couldn't take it out to market today, given market conditions, but we might at least explore that next year and see if there's a market for the property. Again, ICAP is taking rate, and we need to make sure that, that we're competitive in, in that regard. So I'll stop there and just say, we appreciate the ongoing relationship, appreciate the opportunity to be involved in the Safety Committee. The ICAP IMWCA loss control visits are always well-received, and, and there's very few issues or very few items. We have ongoing dialogue with Alyssa and Stephanie about making sure properties are insured and they're priced properly and, and do what we can to mitigate risk and, and claims. So with that, we'll stop and make some questions.
Any questions?
I don't have any. Thank you very much.
Yeah, is ICAP then included in the professional EPLI?
Correct. That's correct. Yeah, ICAP does everything except the work comp.
Okay, gotcha. No, I don't, I don't have any questions. Just thank you for all the work. And I think the, the work comp claims slide where it shows that significant increase and then very rapid significant decrease, I think just reflects how hard our, our team works to make sure that everybody is educated and, and safe and appreciate all the support that you give them also and making sure they have all the information they need. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, I just want to say thank you as well.
Thank you.
Have a great rest of your day.
Thank you, again.
Thank you. And, and hat tip to Stephanie and Alyssa.
Yes.
The tribute to them.
Right, we'll move on to agency reports. We have the Ames Chamber of Commerce and Economic Development Workforce Retraining and Partly Outreach Report, but isn't that now the Ames Regional Alliance? Okay.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Uh, yes, we are now the Ames Regional Economic Alliance. However, our current contract is still a Chamber Economic Ames Economic Development Commission. So when that officially transfers over next year, everything will be reported on all our reports and everything else. So we're in that transition period, if you will.
Nikki, you're going to start?
It's Nikki's turn.
All right. I don't have to zoom in this time. I'm not at the middle school expo or anything, so that's nice. Thank you so much for listening to Greg and I this morning on what we've been doing this last quarter. Excited to kind of give you an overview. So retraining is always the first thing that we have. So we did have 23 participants. 22 of them did graduate, which is great. I love to see these numbers. We have a new class that they are participating in, and it's a water class, and it could be wastewater or water treatment or what is the third one? Like, I can't remember the name of it. But it is a program that is done down in Ankeny. We've had a gentleman from Maxwell. We've got a gentleman from Cambridge, and then we've got, I think, four or five from Huxley that will be taking these classes. And so what it is, is it's something that they have to take in order to have the correct grade levels. I'm still learning this, so I might get some of it wrong. The correct grade levels in order to actually work in the water departments in our communities. So the communities are absolutely loving the fact that, you know, we're helping them out. The, the students that are taking it are loving it because as soon as they get up to their next level, they kind of get that pay increase that goes with it as well. So, um, yeah, and we're able to kind of put this out to a lot of the community. So that's been a lot of great work there. And then, of course, you know, your CNAs, your CDLs, your IT help desk, all of those are still going strong as well. So I'm really excited. We do have a Journeys class that started last night, so it'll, last night, tonight, and tomorrow night. And then once they get done with that, they will be scheduling for their fall classes. So we'll have a lot more coming up here soon. So always a continuous thing. Always love hearing all the great success stories as well. So then moving into theworkinames.com, we turned this in before the great news came, but you can kind of see the stats that we have for theworkinames.com. We've been working on that website. We've had some issues in regards to actually pulling from Indeed. We got an improvement, but just last week, Elizabeth in our office actually helped connect us with some people, and we now have a great feed that is coming in. And so our website, as of, I think it was this morning, will actually be pulling a lot more, and it'll be back up to normal and working properly. So we're really excited about that because that's kind of been a stressor. But a lot of people are still using it. I'm still getting, there's the pop-up that comes up that, you know, if you want to submit your resume. So I still get tons of resumes. I share them out to, you know, like our workforce sponsors or, you know, any of our members that are looking for those individuals with what's on their resume. So that's also a great asset. The career fairs, you can see Sarah and I were extremely busy. And, you know, got to talk to a lot of great students, and so that, that's always a lot of fun. We also did a lot of the high school ones too, and so those are always a lot of fun as well. Going over to the workforce side, so our Ukraine workforce workshop completed, and we are looking at doing this again in the fall. We've also discussed trying to push this out to also Spanish-speaking individuals because that is something that the community has said that they would like to have as well as the Ukraine individuals coming in. So exciting about that. The River Value Valley Veterans Network has just been a great success. We've been moving all over the county. You know, also going over to Boone County as well, and we'll be back here in August down at Torrent with Chevron as the sponsor. And so it's always a great night to just network for those veterans and their family members. So always a great event. Untapped Workforce, Individuals with Disabilities, I think it was a great conversation. It was great to have some people in the room having those conversations. Oh, it's stormy. But always a great, you know, to keep that conversation going in the community. I know a lot of, a lot of people, you know, it's near and dear to their heart. So especially in our office, you know, Brenda's always enjoying that one as well. So, um, teaching for the workforce was a great success. We keep seeing a lot of teachers coming from not just Story and Boone County, but I mean, we've got teachers from Bonnerant, and we had one from Cedar Rapids come over and see, you know, what is different that DMAC is doing with us. So the partnership with DMAC is amazing. Doing this two-day event with the teachers is, is always fun. We, you know, always involve plenty of different members of ours, and so it's, it's always great. Coming up, so we've got all kinds of great events. So last night, we had our Women in Leadership with the sports theme, which was great. Got State of Education Steak Fry, and then also Inner City will be coming up this fall as well, which is always a great learning experience to see what other communities are doing. So we're really excited about that. Where we're going has a great workforce solution, so we're really excited to learn and see, you know, what are, what are they doing differently than us? So, so yeah, any questions for me? Do you sleep? Yeah. I drink coffee. Thank you for your report. Appreciate all the update information. So Greg, you're up.
All right, good morning. Quarter two on County Outreach Report. As you can see, this, this time is our new format. We're going to be testing moving forward. It's going to be a breakdown for each community along with some unitemized different projects as well. So going top to bottom here on the first one, we have Gilbert. Gilbert kind of jumped on the scene after the Jensen Development. We had a first facade grant application that U3 approved earlier this year. They haven't constructed work yet. They're still doing interior. When that is done, they're going to move to the outside, so it doesn't then impact the new interior. So they're just trying to do it in stages. The Open Flame Restaurant Steakhouse, they reached out to me two weeks ago asking for facade grant information, but also additional IEDA grants and help with that with the new Main Street paving. They like to do a complete redo of their facade and entryway and everything else to help with community better. They like to do a complete redo of their facade and entryway and everything else to help with, uh, community betterment. So that was positive as well. Uh, Roland, we are finishing a development agreement with a developer for fifty new homes on the south side. Uh, I have met with their financial aid, uh, financial person in the city and city staff. We are finalizing the, the financials that the city's going to be able to contribute to a development agreement. However, they have plotted fifty as their target for the new development itself and the land is now locked under option. So that is very exciting for Roland. It's the first time since the nineties they've been able to have this type of development and they are very, very thrilled with that. Also as well, something that is on here, uh, city water plant project, that was a late addition to this report. It's something that kind of hit my radar. B and K came back with a project estimated for a new plant facility of eight million dollars. Simply the city could not afford to do that with their current budgeting and current projects they have in the pipeline. So working with the public works and staff and financials, we are going to come up with some other options. They're going to be probably half that cost. It's still going to expand the water services for the area, but it's going to provide water backup along with water plug-in to the world water districts. So they're going to have a backup as well because their wells are hitting their lifespan. Their wells are eighty-nine years old at this point. So they are looking at ma- making sure that they have available water for not just the growth we're seeing, but also the maintaining the services they have. That is just a new project that's come up really recently, but we are making significant progress and hope to have something before council in, in early September. So that's a positive. Uh, McCall'sburg. Uh, believe it or not, McCall'sburg has someone that wants to put up a wedding venue rental facility in downtown McCall'sburg. It's a one-block radius facility, hundred and twenty people, a couple bathrooms. Meeting with the mayor and city clerk in the next couple of weeks to work on incentives and everything else. As you are aware, they don't currently have anything in McCall'sburg, but we're going to re, we're talking about reinstituting those TIF and urban renewal areas to help fund that. It is very, very exciting for McCall'sburg because they also have development happening across the street on its own that, uh, Amy mentioned at Story County Economic Growth Development Group last week. But that is not anything the city is incentivizing. That is completely local. So that is a positive. The city is very happy to see as well. Uh, Zering budget work continues. Sales completed a one oh eight East Main Street. This is a project that goes back to two thousand four. The city was finally able to sell. We came to a purchase agreement last week and it was finalized. The city has received eighty thousand dollars approximately after closing costs and the back taxes on it was paid in full. That is now back into the general operating fund, which the city is very happy to have with their current financial, uh, issues there in place. But also as well, the developer, uh, local new owner is a local person who is a very, very gung-ho person towards Zering. So it's someone that's going to be local, someone that's down the street, someone that's going to be very plugged into the community and helping grow the community. So that's a positive as well.
How big did you say that facility will be?
In McCall'sburg?
Yeah.
It's going to be approximately three city lots. It's right next to City Hall. So it's going to be that entire block south of the old co-op headquarters.
Thank you.
Yep, hundred and twenty person, two bathrooms with a open door venue on the outside. City staff is in transition in Zering as well. However, I also have an inquiry in Zering on some public works projects. But right now until they're, um, they're pulling the city clerk from State Center in part-time. Once they find a full-time person to take over that position, then those projects will move ahead. But until that time, I'm kind of in a holding pattern. Uh, Colo, everything is moving forward. Um, building tour three twenty-one Main Street, new owners looking at improvements, facade grant, interior. He's done some improvements on the inside as well. It's a bar, uh, food, open music venue. Uh, he's looking to make significant improvements in lighting, everything downtown on the corner. So it's going to be a nice location for Colo once he's done. Uh, have received a dollar general inquiry. I've not heard back yet. And I'll say this with, uh, in the background there, but, uh, we are getting the final con, conceptuals, uh, sent from Strand on Colo's housing development later this week. We have a developer interested in that property that they have on that thirty-odd acres. Once we have that, we can start talking actual breaking ground this fall hopefully. So that's a very good thing to have for Colo. Uh, Collins, uh, Landis rezoning happened, uh, as you were fully approved, which was very appreciative. I did receive a thank you note from Landis for the quick action of the Story County, uh, planning and zoning staff supervisors and the city on their efforts. They did not want anything to, to hold them up and they were very happy. Everything went through as it did. Um, I'm talking to Landis on the city purchasing their current property within city limits. It's not the ammonia storage facility that they're moving out to the south side location. It's the old co-op elevator location further north. Right on the corner there of the, the downtown district. Uh, Landis is interested in talking to the city and letting them have it for future commercial growth. This is where another potential, uh, location option for camper commuters looking at. Uh, Maxwell Storytime daycare, they are looking at new playground equipment. So I'm working with, uh, Tatalia there. State workforce housing tax credit application was submitted. Six new living units for phase one on the housing development. The workforce housing tax credit is approximately a hundred and ninety thousand dollars. Uh, the city is working through the urban renewal and TIF program as well, but it's going to be four, uh, split level duplexes or townhomes. And then it's going to be two, uh, single-family units. This is phase one. Altogether, we're looking at five phases every year for the next five years. So Maxwell is very happy and it helps Maxwell budget as well. Maxwell's able to do this without taking additional debt and we're able to do it through an urban renewal with tipping. So that way it doesn't have to, to be all at once. Uh, Cambridge several downtown properties are in discussion for sale. Uh, I'm talking to the city about purchasing those as a potential, just so we can have them and control them. Project, this was good news. I talked to Barb. Uh, city has finally been able to send some receipts for reimbursement to the state on the American Legion project. So that is not solved their, uh, fire marshal issue as well, but they have been able to recoup some finances, which has helped the city out currently. And then Slater, what is not happening in Slater at the moment? Seaver's Commercial Development, nine lots, one sold, one in transition. They have eight plotted lots, one outlot that hasn't been done yet. It's kind of their backup lot if someone wants additional space, but they have nine total. They have one already under contract and sold, another one in transition of being sold. And I've received an inquiry yesterday on another lot that has, someone has interest as well. They have not completed the roadways, but the water and sewer is getting put in as we speak. So that is positive. Uh, three twenty-one Main Street, as of today, the city of Slater will own three twenty-one Main Street. Once that is done, the mayor has indicated that he'd like our organization to take point on turning it into a redevelopment project for the city. Kind of along the model, what we call the Jefferson model, the city and nonprofit group takes it, refurb, refurbishes it, makes it up to date and then turns around and sells it and then flips it and then uses that money for another project. That is something that's going to be on our radar and it's going to probably take up our, our resources for the next several months in Slater for that. Um, phase one of the outdoor facility, uh, they did apply for a TIF urban renewal, uh, grant through U three later this year for consideration. But the city has already allocated dollars for that project. They are looking at a phase one of about approximately four hundred thousand dollars for phase one. We have a three-phase project planned for that. So include baseball, softball, uh, outdoor tennis courts. Pickleball is in the mix of it as well, and it is donated property by the co-op next to the new housing development along the trail. This is something that the city has already done the initial groundwork for. It's where their, uh, derecho debris was. They had the foundation set for a parking lot. That's where the debris went. They cleaned it up. And then like you three found with your location, then they had to redo it again because of the tariff. They re, now have redone it with public works that cost internally, so it's no additional taxpayer dollars. But now that's phase one. Later this fall, they hope to break ground on. So that's a plus. And then, uh, ex officio, community, uh, economic development task force has restarted. I'm ex officio on that as an advisor only. It's made up of local business leaders, city staff, elected officials. Uh, this is really what helped us get the childcare project over the finish line that came to you for additional funds. That one point six million dollar project is three years in the making. That project from your additional funds and, and the city of Slater has now made that project happen and the city of Slater is extremely grateful for that. So thank you three for that additional support. And then additional projects listed down the list as well. I will say the Trainfoe, which is the public safety pro, project that we started, uh, it started with Nevada, then encompass Story County and now is now Story County, Boone County and Hamilton County. And all three counties have signed on to, for, uh, work on this project for public safety purposes and also economic development. This program that I hope to bring back more, um, is something I sit on with the task force with supervisor Faisal. This project will increase public safety, but also economic development dollars and their data is recognized in Washington as well. So that economic development funding can come back and, and there is no issue with that issue, uh, when decided by the DOT. And I'm open for any questions.
You're busy as well.
I, I do, and I drink coffee occasionally. So that is just, it's something I do occasionally, yes.
I don't have any questions myself. I just thank you both for all the work that you, that you do.
The Maxwell daycare, have you connected them with Boost?
Uh, they didn't have anything in time for the submission process, um, but I have connected them. I gave them the data to it. What I want from Tatalia first is actual specs on what she wants to do. If you've ever been at her facility, it's that back piece of property up next to the alleyway for access. I, I want to know, are you looking at the fence for security? Are you looking at just the equipment? Are you looking at? She, right now, she just says she needs new equipment for safety. I want to know what exactly she will have for it before I submit it to Boost, but yes, Boost is on our radar.
Okay. That was my only question. I, I think you do a really, an excellent job of keeping us in the loop weekly. So, thank you.
Thank you.
You're doing a whole lot. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you both.
Thank you.
Thank you much. Stay dry today.
Yeah.
Uh, next we have consideration of the July twenty twenty, July twenty-third, twenty twenty-four minutes.
I move approval.
Second.
They moved in seconded, Faisal, aye. Merkin?
Aye.
Haddon's, aye. Uh, we have no personnel actions today. Uh, consideration of claims.
I move approval of claims.
Second.
Then moved in seconded, Merkin?
Aye.
Faisal?
Aye.
Haddon's, aye. Uh, consent agenda items. Is there anything anyone's pulling from consent? If not, we'll take a motion.
I would move approval of consent as presented.
Second.
Then moved in seconded, Faisal?
Aye.
Merkin?
Aye.
Haddon's, aye. Uh, we have no public hearing items, additional items, discussion and consideration of resolution twenty-five dash oh eight Prairie Valley subdivision, second edition, final plat.
Good morning.
Good morning.
We are definitely getting a tag team approach from all planning and development staff. I might just, between Andrea and I, we're going to cover some points and then open up for questions from the board. Um, this is the final plat. It's actually the second filing for what is known as a Prairie Valley sub, Prairie Valley subdivision is being processed as a major subdivision. Um, you are familiar with the property, just but for the record, it's located at the southeast corner of the intersection of five one hundredth and one seventieth street in the northwest quarter of section seven Franklin Township. So basically due west to the city of Gilbert over to the county, the county, um, boundary. Back in December of twenty eighteen, the board did rezone the property, uh, a hundred, hundred twenty acres in total to R one transitional residential. The prelim, preliminary plat then for the entire, um, Prairie Valley subdivision followed. Um, that was approved in May of twenty twenty with two conditions of approval. Um, that'd be the limitation for seventy lots in the to, in four total additions. So again, this is your second final plat that you, of the four that you've taken act, or will be taking action on. And then the second condition of approval was that the design, the subdivision meets the conservation design principles prescribed as a condition of the rezoning and other conditions of the rezoning. And then the last, um, condition with the rezoning required that the environmentally sensitive areas in the floodplain be rezoned to green belt conservation and that the C two C future land use map be amended accordingly. Um, those both were also approved in May of twenty twenty at the same time the overall preliminary plat was approved. Um, on the screen is, uh, uh, what the proposed layout is for the entire, um, preliminary plat that was approved in May of twenty twenty. Uh, you can see the area that's hatched in the southwest corner. Uh, is the, um, area that is zone green belt conservation. And the different four filings are identified. What's in the, um, just north of that hatched area was the first, first phase that's been, um, majority of it has been built out. Those lots, um, have been issued zoning permits. And then if you go to the right, you see the longer road going north to south. Um, the second filing is um, predominantly that northern half of that property. Uh, just quickly on the surrounding land uses to the north, um, there's a thirty-seven plus acre parcel that is in agricultural row crop production, um, along with another parcel, um, in agricultural row, row crop production. Um, then you go to the east, it is again primarily ag um, with larger sized parcels. To the south, we do have a parcel that was constructed, a parcel that contains a dwelling constructed in two thousand and six. Um, approximately twelve acres in hay production and pasture area. And then another parcel that's, uh, greater than our thirty-five acre lot size that has a dwelling that was again constructed in two thousand and six. To the west, um, we go on into, um, for this particular piece, we have the property that's owned by Story County Conservation at, as part of our park system. Um, when you go further west though, you go into Boone County with the county line being right there on the west property.
So we do have in chapter eighty-seven standards for final plats of major subdivisions. So because the preliminary plat was approved in twenty twenty, this final plat was measured against what was approved, um, back in twenty twenty. So, um, everything they've submitted is in conformance with that preliminary plat, including the easements for public utilities, stormwater, um, the management and ownership agreement with county conservation and the restrictive covenants, um, for the homeowners association as well. Um, so in Iowa code, chapter three fifty-four, there are a few different legal documents that have to be submitted. Um, those have been submitted as well, including the title opinion, treasurer's certificate, consent to plating, including by the mortgagee. And then in chapter eighty-seven, we do have items that have to be shown on the, on the final plat. All of those were met. And then if improvements have not been completed, financial security, um, a letter or a letter of credit is submitted to us and we'll talk about that a little bit more. And so approval of this second edition of Prairie Valley allows for the lots to be created, recorded and then transferred to, to new ownership. So on this slide, it's a, it's a large subdivision, so it is hard to fit it on one slide. Um, but you can see the second edition, it kind of, um, combines what was shown as phase two and phase three on the preliminary plat. So there are, this is now adding twenty-seven additional lots to the ones that were already platted as part of, um, phase one or the first edition. There is a street lot, um, totaling three point two four acres. There are four outlots with access granted to Story County. And then to the, um, to the south there is another outlot that, well, that will be phase, um, or I'm sorry, the third edition to Prairie Valley is by understanding the third and fourth edition. And then there are four outlots dedicated to the homeowners association. Um, those are mostly for stormwater facilities, leach fields for the septic systems and that kind of thing. And that just, that totals just over ten acres. And this is just a closer look at the portion. It takes out that outlot at the south for future additions. So as you can see, there are twenty-seven additional lots here, um, and including a new cul-de-sac. So in chapter eighty-seven, there are requirements about, again, like I mentioned, what has to be shown on the plat. The second edition plat is in conformance with all of these subsurface features are shown. The signed originals of the, the treasurer's certificate, consent to plat, all of that has been provided um, as well as those, um, restrictive covenants, those match what was submitted with the preliminary plat. And then as far as in, um, in chapter eighty-seven, there is a provision that site evaluations be done by a certified engineer or soils professional. Um, with this second edition, the county sanitarian has indicated that they'll allow for the evaluations to be submitted with the septic construction permits that they get in and that are concurrent with, with the zoning permits they get for the new houses. And this allows for them to, to look at where the house itself is actually going to go in relation to where the septic system needs to be. Um, so that's a little bit of a change from the first edition. Um, so that'll be happening concurrently, those site evaluations. So we do have a signed original, um, of the development agreement. And let's see, as far as the letter of financial security, um, we did receive that, but the county engineer, I believe, has, has been out at the property to make sure that all improvements have been completed. So correct me if I'm wrong, Liam, but I think that letter of credit will soon be released if it hasn't already been. And then there will be street corner markers installed. And let's see. Um, all the design materials, workmanship, installation, construction of improvements, all of those. And let's see, um, all the design materials, workmanship, installation, construction of improvements, all of those have been warranted for a period of two years from the start of, of construction. So the traffic impact study, that was completed with the preliminary plat, um, back in twenty twenty. Um, and so we also reviewed the plat and, and all the documents for conformance, you know, with, with the dimensions, locations of the lots that were approved with the preliminary plats. Um, and all of that matches up. As I mentioned, the restrictive covenants match up, the easement agreements, those are all the same as what was seen with the preliminary plat. I think I'll turn it over to Leanne.
As Andrea said, um, earlier, this was, this final plat was weighed for conformance with the pre, preliminary plat. Again, reminder, the preliminary plat was for the entire development. Um, in particular, um, the points that we just want to address, um, there were several conditions of approval attached with that preliminary plat. Um, one was talking about the construction demolition debris located in vicinity of lot fifty-three. That has been satisfied as was required by the deadline with the preliminary plat. Uh, next one is that protective subdrain to protect prairie remnants west of lot fifty-two be added to the preliminary plat prior to recording. Um, but in addition, a note regarding the nature of that protective drain, subdrain be added. Um, those were addressed as well with the preliminary plat prior to recordation. Um, and then last on this slide is that the applicant consider, should consider how to encourage homeowners subscribing to and monitoring security, having a monitored security system. Um, really this does not require any potential action with the final plat, just a recommend, recommendation. Excellent. Um, again, considering the additional requirements that were placed with the condition of approval in the preliminary plat, that the board of supervisors shall determine a method to pay for the right turn lane on one seventieth at one five hundredth as part of the preliminary plat consideration. Through those discussions that occurred, um, that need for the right turn lane has been monitored by Story County engineer Darren Moon. He has asked at this time, he given some construction with a new tile line under that intersection, that that be delayed until such time that, um, the county engineer is ready to proceed with that work and will coordinate with the developer. And then the last, um, two points are the, the developer Prairie Valley or homeowner association is, would be responsible for any connections. Any cost of roadway connection out lot D between forty-sixth and lot fifty-six and between lots thirty-eight and forty-two and any additional cost of connecting Foxtail Court, Stab Road, Road with Development to the east. We are not there at this point yet, but this would remain a condition of approval, um, going forward if that were to develop out in the future. And then the last one, that fencing to the east be shown on the final plat. And then this condition has been met as well. Um, the notices to, um, the city of Gilbert did go out and they are taking action on this August fifth. Um, Story County staff will not record the subdivision until action by the city of Gilbert has been finalized. Public notice was sent to property owners within a quarter mile of the proposed subdivision on July seventeenth. At this time, we have not received any feedback or comments. And I'm turning it back to Andrea.
Staff does have a few conditions that we're recommending to be put on this plat for the second edition. Um, the first is which is if the septic locations change, the subdrain plan to protect the prairie remnants from runoff from the septic systems shall be reevaluated by the developer's engineer and reviewed by county conservation, environmental health and planning and development staff. Uh, number two, that all permitting activity for phase two of Prairie Valley subdivision will be put on hold when the county engineer requests the right turn lane on one hundred seventieth street at five hundredth avenue be installed. The county is currently borrowing a new tile under that intersection. Um, and the county engineer requested that that turn lane wait until the, the tile project is completed. The engineer will communicate with planning and development and as to when permitting will be put on hold and when it can resume. And number three, all development must meet county erosion control standards, um, for runoff, things like that. Um, and number four, the final plat will not be recorded until the city of Gilbert has either approved or waived their review. So with that, um, seeing that all requirements from chapter eighty-seven, um, for final plats of major subdivisions have been met. All required documents have been submitted. Planning and development staff does recommend approval of the Prairie Valley major subdivision, second edition with conditions as presented.
Any questions?
I have a few.
Sure.
Um, I'm looking at the report right now on page eight, and this may be elsewhere in the report. Talks about covenants, including prohibitions on using fertilizer that contains phosphorus. And if testing shows has been done, the conservation board could take action, uh, either by injunction or damages. Against whom would they take action? Do you know? And this may be a review of things we've talked about before, but the, the reason for the question is the county has spent a lot of time and money. Planning and development has, conservation has. We, um, got Dr. Tom Rosberg to do the native plant, the indigenous plants survey. And we've got things in here that said these will be done. And I, they, they sound good on paper. I'm just concerned about how are we really going to make sure that we are protecting the, you know, the natural areas here?
And Leanne, did you have an answer for?
Um, we'll, we'll tackle it together, Steve, we're on the same page.
Um, I don't know, um, offhand if the covenants state who the injunction is against. Um, and so far with the first edition of Prairie Valley built out, I'm not sure yet. I mean, sorry that it hasn't been out yet, been built out yet. I don't know that Story County Conservation has done any water quality testing, to my knowledge, uh, but we can certainly ask. Um, it gets more info on that.
Yeah, I would just like to know that since we have it in there, that it gets done regularly. So if there is a problem, we get gone to it. And, and the concern is because there are so many landowners there. And I don't know how, how active an HOA, I mean, do they even have an HOA yet?
I believe they do.
Okay. I don't know how active the HOA is going to be. Do we sue the HOA if, if there's phosphorus? You know, there's, there's just a lot of, there's really just a lot of details that have to be continued to be looked at if we're going to make sure that we protect that area.
Um, given that that is a civil matter for the enforcement of the restrictive covenants, um, I want to keep that in mind. But I would make the assumption that the, the entity that would be, um, at least mentioned in any type of legal action would be the homeowners association.
Well, it would have to be.
Individual property owners.
Test the water, but you can't go back and say, and it came from lot fifty-three.
Unless there was some way for that to, a, a direct correlation to be identified, correct?
Okay. It also said, per the covenants, no debris hazards, materials, household hazards, waste or unapproved plants or soils shall be placed anytime in the subdivision. Who's going to approve plants that are placed in the subdivision? That, that seems like a real difficult one to.
That, as that's part of the covenant, covenants, that would be managed by the homeowners association as overseeing entity of that.
Then somebody needs to give them a list of unapproved plants that there wouldn't be, have to be there. They're, they're not going to know that.
Yeah, and we can check and see if, how that was communicated to them with the preliminary plat.
Um, I think that's it about that area. Um, the, just a question, are you requiring screening of LP tanks?
No.
Yeah, that was kind of a disappointment to me that the developer chose not to go with a line on that because that would have meant, wouldn't have been a lot LP tanks around there, but I know that was a money issue. Um, regarding traffic, there's also a discussion about a return, uh, right turn lane on five hundredth onto one seventieth. And it said that there was one car short of being required. That's pretty close to not have it required now, but I, it, it, you know, that's the way we've already set it up. But my question is really, is that going north on five hundredth and onto one seventieth? In other words, on the east side? And if so, it runs into, a, a right turn lane there could run into, um, a drainage facility, an open ditch that I don't know how, how, how you would redo the drainage if you were going to put a right turn lane there. Because the road ditch is the open ditch, basically, for the drainage. And maybe that's a question for somebody else. I just wanted to say, I was, I was kind of concerned when I, I didn't remember anything before about that right turn lane there. I assume it's, I assume it's going north because there's no reason you'd have a right turn lane going south because you'd be going onto a gravel road into Boone County. So. Really, that's something we could think about. Um, the fence to the east, was the landowner satisfied with the fence? Because I know he had concerns about his livestock operations. Marcus is saying, yes, he was. Okay, thank you. I think that's it. Thank you. Wait, there was one other thing. There wasn't, excuse me.
Supervisor Faisal, do you have questions?
No, no. Um, my only question was about the, the plantings and the fertilizer, so.
Yeah, that was my question too, when I read that. And Supervisor Merkin, thank you for all the questions that you asked. Things that I hadn't quite thought of, so I appreciate the detail that you did with that. So, any additional comments, questions? We do have it is not a public hearing item.
Correct.
Right. Right. Uh, we do have someone in the audience, are you okay with them making a comment? Okay. Sure. Please state your name. Oh, you might have to click the button. Yeah.
Good morning, I'm, I'm John Gady. I'm restraining associates, I'm the engineer on the project. We're excited about this project. Thanks for considering approval on this. I just, when this staff report was, was being presented, I just had one item of clarification. Um, as part of this construction plans for this plat, we had proposed the right turn lane addition on one hundred and seventieth, which would go for returning traffic going north on, uh, fiftieth avenue. County was doing.
Five hundredth, you mean?
Sorry. Five, five hundredth avenue. The county was doing a project there, we coordinated with, uh, with Darren Moon. Um, and we had that as part of our bid package for our contractor, our grader and paver to complete that work.
Okay.
It was, my understanding, because the coordination with this, Darren had said that that right turn lane could be delayed until we do the next phase of development, which would be plat three instead of this plat two. Um, the way the conditions were presented on, on the screen here made it sound like when the county engineer determines that as part of this plat two, then we would have to, um, do those, those improvements. Um, so that's a, that's really a substantial change that I just wanted to, to, to get clarified with the county engineer.
Are we talking though about two different right turn lanes?
No. No, just the one, the one on one seventieth onto five hundredth.
Okay.
And that's because, remember our drainage issue there.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're replacing the tile under that bridge.
Right, and I thought it was a right turn off of five hundredth onto one seventieth.
No, that's the second one I was asking about.
Okay, so I need to have them flipped.
Yeah.
Right, the, the, it's my understanding the traffic impact study that was completed as part of the preliminary plat only had one warrant, and then I think it barely met that warrant from what I recall. And this was that right turn lane. Um, and you folks required that of the developer to be, to be put in at some point. So we, we're looking at putting it as part of this plat, but because of that project, um, we were able to do that. So we released the contractor from the paving, the grading work to, to do that. And I was under the impression with the correspondent Darren, that we were going to do that as part of the plat three development. We've stockpiled the dirt to make that right turn lane, the widening there as part of that next phase. And then that way we can hire the paver at that point to, to do those improvements.
Mark, if Marcus, would you come forward if you're going to make a comment, please? Thank you.
So, if you guys want to modify that condition, um, it'll still be at, I mean, ultimately it's going to come down to Darren. For, you know, for he let it not be put in right now as part of the improvements that they've already completed right now. And based on the conversations that I've had with Darren, he was thinking that it was still going to happen. It was just after the tiling was done. Um, so there may have been some miscommunication that happened, probably on all of our parts about whether it was still going to happen during this phase. I can speak with Darren. Um, me and John can speak with Darren about what that looks like.
Um, without you doing that, I would hate to change the, uh, language in this.
I mean, ultimately with the, with the traffic study, um, and at Darren's, at Darren's request, he let it not happen before. And I can reach out to him real quick. If there's anything else that you guys need to discuss, why give him a call just to see where he's at with that.
Why do you want to wait till phase three?
Um, we had planned to do as part of this, this, this project.
Correct.
The, the reason why we, we want to wait now is because we've already released the contractor from doing that work. And so they would have to remobilize into the project and there'd be additional cost, um, burden on the developer. When they do phase three, they'll have the grader, they'll have the paver, they'll all be set up. And so we'll just move that to that time. I believe I have an, an email confirmation from Darren specifically regarding this. That was, that was the, and that was the plan that we had together that, that we would just do this as part of the, the next phase.
The, the way I read this and the way I've understood this, it is in essence just saying though, if any of this construction activity were to occur during phase two, um, all of the other stuff would stop so that construction traffic is managed accordingly and that the impacts are lessened. So it, um, when Marcus returns from trying to try Darren, it could just be that the, as simple as the turn lane is delayed until phase three.
When's phase three?
I'm sorry, what?
When will phase three be?
Spoke to Darren, he is fine with it being on phase three. So we can change that condition to, um, the turn lane will be part of phase three.
John, do you know when the phase three is potentially scheduled?
Um, good question. So the, the first development took three to four years to get about eighty to eighty-five percent build out. I would assume that's going to take about the same amount of time for, for this, this phase two. So three to four years we would do that. And keep in mind, um, when I recall with the traffic impact study, it was basically assuming that all of those, you know, plat one and plat two is what we've shown up today, those, those fifty-five lots were fully developed. The people from those units then would be causing the impacts that potentially would require those, those right turn lane improvements on one hundred and seventy.
Seems like from a traffic standpoint, it would be easier to get it done before all those people are living in those houses and moving onto that and driving onto that street. That's my only concern about that. Or it is, it is my concern that, now why not get it done before the people need it rather than wait till you've got all the traffic there that's causing all the problem? And then you have to close it to do the right turn lane. I think that's kind of ridiculous.
I, I think that was, that was our intention, right? We had proposed to do that as part of this construction project.
Yeah.
And so we got delayed because the dry, drain tile improvement and contractor got released. So we have every intention to do this per the conditions of the, the zoning documents. It's just, it won't be an impact, I would say necessarily to these folks that are living in Prairie Valley. It'll be an impact to the motor, you know, um, folks on one hundred and seventy. folks on one hundred and seventieth when we do that improvement, which, you know, Darren requires us to have the appropriate traffic control and and safety up for that to make those grading and paving additions.
Thank you for that clarification, so.
And thank you for contacting Darren. Just so that we're sure that we're all understanding around the same page.
And then I'll just read right to that we spent a lot of time and effort, you know, working with you and staff regarding the stormwater management facility on this project. This is one of the first stormwater management facilities that you do have in the county. So as part of our engineering plan, we've addressed what we call the, you know, the quantity of water due to the hard surface in the buildings that have come out there to protect the downstream, you know, the conservation area. And then also we're doing that water quality component. I'm not certain how many other subdivisions, if any, in Story County have that water quality component. So we're controlling that first flush and we're releasing that downstream. So hopefully we're getting all that settlement of of any of the debris coming from the subdivision. Do you have any questions for me?
I just wondered is if as people are, and maybe you don't know, and maybe it's a question I should ask somebody else, but as people are buying lots here, if they're made aware of the covenants.
Yeah, it it's right with their deed. I don't know if there's a special meeting or anything in that regard. I do know that it's a pretty active community out there. And so I know it was with the developers that that's part of it, that they're giving them these conditions that are out there, especially since it's a conservation subdivision.
Living in an HOA myself, I can say that when I was even looking for a home, the realtor provided me with the covenants right away because that was kind of part of my decision making if I wanted to move into that particular area or not, so I could review what the requirements were.
So do we need to make a change to the conditions? Thank you. Thank you.
It might clarify that we keep mentioning phasing, like phase two or phase three, but maybe it's probably plat two. Plat three is what the terminology maybe should be for the future right turn lane versus phase three. It's minor.
So would would we be, here's what I think we're doing now. Installation of the right turn lane on one seventieth onto five fifty, five hundredth, pardon me, will be moved to fate plat three.
Yeah, I just simply wrote construction, the right turn lane on one seventieth street at five hundredth avenue will be delayed until plat three.
Yep, okay.
Final plat three.
Hey, if there's no more discussion, is there a motion?
We will, let me.
Are the conditions on the resolution?
I'd have to look.
If they are, we'll have to revise that resolution before it's signed.
Okay.
Sorry.
No.
Conditions listed on attachment C.
Yeah, so we'll just have to amend the attachment C.
Yeah, attachment C lists out.
Okay. So we can take, we could still take action today, though.
Is there a motion?
I would move approval of resolution twenty-five dash oh eight with conditions as discussed.
Is there a second?
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Faisal?
Aye.
Merkin?
Aye.
Haddon's eye.
Thank you.
We have no departmental reports or other reports. Any upcoming agenda items?
No.
No.
Now is the time for public comment number two. Comments from the public on items not on this agenda. The board may not take any action on the comments due to requirements of open meeting law, but may do so in the future. If anyone would like to make public comment, if you're on Zoom, please raise your hand, or if you're in the public meeting room, please come forward. And seeing then we will close public comment number two. Now's time for liaison assignments, committee meeting updates and announcements. Supervisor Merkin?
Thank you. Have immediate conservation this afternoon. Tomorrow morning, a meeting with emergency management administrator and later on tomorrow, meeting on broadband, the additional monies that are coming down from the feds, trying to get a plan, what we might be able to do with those. Thursday morning, I'm attending the State of Education meeting and following that, I'm zooming with Mid Iowa Development Foundation to discuss their work. Friday, I have an AEDC board meeting. And then we're into August, right? And next Monday, I don't have anything on my calendar yet.
Thank you, Supervisor Faisal.
Yeah, this evening I have a boost meeting. Tomorrow morning, I have an NEDC meeting. And then in the afternoon, hopefully, we'll be able to participate in the housing action plan team meeting. Thursday, I will be out in Iowa City with my daughter. Friday, hopefully, I will have breakfast, catch up with Greg Picklap, just to talk about in more detail the projects he's working on. And that that is it. I'm probably going to be out more than I'm in, at least this week while we, while my helping my daughter with some medical things.
If all goes well there.
Thank you.
I'm here today. I do have to leave a bit early. My dog's been sick for about a week or so, so I have a vet appointment with her this afternoon. I'm in all day tomorrow. I have a meeting with Leanne with planning and development. Thursday, I have a workforce meeting and then meeting with conservation. Friday, Board of Health training in the morning. Monday, I have an appointment, but we'll be in the office about noon or earlier for the day. So if there is nothing else, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second, been moved and second. Merkin?
Aye.
Faisal?
Aye.
Haddon's eye. We are adjourned.